I want to welcome everyone to the January 9th City Council Meeting. Welcome to everyone in the room and at home. Tonight, we're going to start out with something special because we've had something special happen in our community. It's not every day that we win a Rose Bowl, so yes, I'll even let you clap over that. Anyway, we're going to start out with ceremonial matters, a proclamation celebrating the University of Oregon. I'm going to come down here and I'm going to be joined by Rob Mullins, Director of Intercollegiate Athletics, and Lorraine Davis, the Acting Senior Vice President and Provost from the University of Oregon. We couldn't let it go without giving you more and more roses. So, here you go. And here's a proclamation. Whereas the University of Oregon is an invaluable town and gown partner and an important voice and resource in our efforts to address community and neighborhood issues, the university's spirit of collaboration and communication is strong and greatly appreciated. And whereas we are proud of the University of Oregon's academic success and its economic and cultural contributions to the Eugene community, and whereas the University of Oregon serves more than 21,000 current students, and I would say residents, and has more than 160,000 alumni around the world, it is home to top programs in agriculture -- agriculture, architecture, sorry. Architecture, law, education, and sports business, and continues to gain ground in all areas. And whereas we value the partnership between the city and the university in planning for and implementing the 2012 Olympic track and field trials, and whereas we're proud to honor both athletic and academic champions at the 2011 Celebrating Champions Parade. The parade was a great opportunity to take stock of and celebrate many local community, academic, and athletic champions. And whereas the University of Oregon football team achieved great success during the 2011 football season culminating in a win at the Rose Bowl on January 2nd, 2012, and the first victory at this event since 1917. And whereas the University of Oregon has been the outright Pac-10, Pac-12 champion in football for three consecutive seasons, and whereas exemplary achievements of the University of Oregon athletes, students, faculty, and staff bring pride to Oregonians and U of O alumni everywhere, now therefore I, Kitty Piercy, Mayor of the City of Eugene, do hereby proclaim Monday, as today, January 9th, 2012, as University of Oregon Appreciation Day, and encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the accomplishments and contributions of the University of Oregon staff, faculty, students, athletes, and supporters. All right, congratulations. And you will all take note, we are keeping company with the trophy and the wonderful and much admired helmets that went to the game, right? So, thank you so much for being here, thank you so much for all the work that's been done, and we love this celebration. It makes us all feel especially good in the winter months, so we just appreciate it. Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor. One more time. Correct. Oh, over there. Of course you did. Are you wearing it? Some days I need it. I know. Thank you. You're welcome. All right, let's give him a hand. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda this evening, that was fun, is the election of City Council Officers for 2012. I'd like to take note that Councilor Farr is on the phone down here. And Council President, you want to make a motion for the Council President?
I move to elect George Brown as President of the City Council for 2012.
A second motion?
Moved and seconded. Would you please vote? So, there's seven in favor and none in opposi -- six in favor and none in opposition. It passes, congratulations. He said yes? Yeah. Okay. All right, and so the next one?
Can I still make a motion even though I'm not president anymore?
Actually, it should go, it probably should go to George, huh?
I suppose it should.
George?
I move to elect Pat Farr, Council Vice President.
And seconded by Betty? Moved and seconded? All the, please vote.
Aye.
Pat, Councilor Farr votes aye, and there are six yeses here, so it passes. Thank you and congratulations to you both. All right, we'll move on with the agenda. The reason Councilor Farr isn't here is he is, his son is getting married, so congratulations. Okay, next comes public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of your three minutes. And I'm going to officially open that forum, and we have 23 people signed up. So, we'll start out with Ernie Short, followed by Gary Jenkins.
Hello, my name's Ernie Short. Hello, members of the council that represents the great city of Eugene, home of the Ducks.
Yay.
My name is Ernie Short, and I'm a resident of Ward 7. I'm here before you today to ask you for your support for the many workers employed by the United States Postal Service. Hopefully, you already know of the plans of the Postal Service to shut down the processing of mail at the Gateway Facility, to change the standard of meeting first and second-class mail of next-day delivery within the 974 area to a substandard level of a two-to-three-day delivery. There was a public meeting held December 28th by the Postal Service, and if any of you were there, I apologize, for I noticed no one from this council present at the meeting. There were other representatives present that voiced their desires not to shut the operation down and how it would affect the community. How you can help is to write a letter to the manager of the Portland District. I have brought a sample letter that you may use or add to or make similar comments, and the address is included on it also. Also, I have brought a commentary by Mr. Gary Jarvis from Sunday's Register-Guard, and I ask also that you read that. And these, there's vital information. I have also brought a page from one of our own newsletters, Just the Facts, and ask you to read this. In the material, there are many important facts. If delay of the mail were to take place, this would be devastating to many citizens in this community. We have until January 12th for public input by mail. I urge that anyone and everyone that depends or uses the U.S. mail to contact them. Thank you for your consideration and help us in this fight to preserve more jobs in our community. On another note, there will be some employees picketing and handing out informational material in the next few days. This will be near various post offices in Eugene and Springfield. And, thank you.
Gary Jenkins is next, followed by Dennis Gabrielson.
Hi, my name's Gary Jenkins, and I'm from the River Road District. Councilmembers, my wife and I are homeless not because of drug, alcohol, or mental issues. We're homeless because of a corrupt police chief and two of his officers that did not tell the truth on March 13th, 2010. Officers that we pay to serve and protect us, not destroy us. Chief Kearns fabricated his story, used the system to his advantage, made untrue statements, and devised a way to keep us apart until we had to plead out of court. I ask you something. If you had just seen your loved one just being beat by a flashlight dripping blood from it, and you haven't seen them in over four months, what would you do? My wife had to plead out of court because she didn't know if my son was alive or dead. You know, being homeless is one thing, but to be homeless because of the people we pay and serve, protect us, is something else. This is a travesty with no remorse over this Jenkins family, what has happened to us. You council members, you know me, Mayor, George, you know that the wrong that was done to this family is horrible, and that you could actually do something to change it. But yet and still, you put these blinders on, you come up with these laws, and all these different types of situations where you can't get involved. The city manager, right, he tells me that his expectations are pretty much the same as our chief, Kearns. Well, that tells me a lot about the city manager. This is wrong. We're not going to go away. What has been done to us is totally wrong. You people need to do something. You need to, you need to use your powers to do whatever it has to do to set this record straight. We want this to be straight. We want the truth to come out. We want to, you know that saying, "The truth will set you free"? Well, we're not free, and we want to be free. And we're not going to get free until the truth comes out. And the people that did this to us are exposed. And if that has to be the chief and the officers that are under him, then so be it. But what was done to this family is horrible. I can't, you know, I can't explain to you anymore or any less that this is, you know, I don't know where to go from here. You know, I've talked to you folks before, and I've got absolutely nowhere. I'm trying to get the AIA report on my son. Alls I can get is absolutely nothing. They say that the investigation was done properly, and that's basically all they're saying. I want to see who said what and when and how they came to this conclusion that it was justified. This is an unarmed man that they beat half to death. How do they justify that? He didn't have a weapon. He had no means of defending himself. How do you justify that? I want to know how they came to that fact and how they justified this young man, my son, being brutally attacked by your officers that we pay to serve and protect. And I'll tell you another thing. This homeless thing that they have on, this Occupy deal, this is only the most positive thing that I've seen for the homeless community since I've been homeless. Help them.
Next is Dennis Gabrielson, followed by Bob Brown.
Hi, this is Dennis Gabrielson. I live in Crestwell. I'm not a citizen of Eugene, but I attend the council meetings regularly. And I attended the last council meeting here, and I want to give the mayor an F for failure. We have rules, and the city has rules, the council has rules, and yet the mayor did not follow those rules on the last meeting. She got up and left after warning the people that they should be quiet. We had five police officers here at that time. The rules say that she should have asked the police officers to eject them. They also should have ejected anybody who had a placard, which you're not supposed to have a placard in here during the council session. So, I give you an F on just that particular point. The other thing I wanted to know, I wanted to talk about was, excuse me, I lost my train of thought. It was on the hearing that you guys had a couple weeks ago on the homeless, increasing the homeless camp. You had the public hearing in the council chamber, in the work session, and the attorney at the time said, "We'll have the public hearing now, there's enough people here to do it," which would have been fine, except he did not, and you did not extend it for 15 days at least for written comments. So, otherwise, I think that violates that particular law for having a public hearing because you didn't have a public hearing. You had a closed hearing, basically. You needed to at least have advertised it or left it open for public input before you voted on it. Thank you.
Bob Brown is next, followed by Jean Stacy.
Good evening. My name is Bob Brown, and I reside in Councilman Zalinka's ward. I'm not sure what the number is. I think that we all share a need for safety, and I think that that's become very apparent in some of what's happened here today, tonight, and in some of the events that have occurred over the past several months. And I think that that safety, some of those expressions of that unmet need have come about for several reasons. There, I think a lot of people, for me, I think that a lot of people are feeling unsafe just due to the conditions in the world today, and there are a lot of reasons for that. And so, there's been a lot of expression, and that expression is becoming louder, that our need for safety is not being met. Some of those people have participated in the Occupy movement throughout our country and throughout the world, in our community. Occupy Eugene has participated in that. And then people, also, we have people, regular citizens, normal community members, who are also expressing that unmet need, and I just thought it's hard to right now. So, I think that that need for safety is really there, and it's becoming very apparent. And my hope is that we can work together as community. My fear is that we can't do that, that we will remain divided, and that we won't be able to come together and provide, that our ability to provide relative safety for each other will diminish over time, and that these expressions will become more and more desperate and perhaps violent, and I'm very concerned about that. So, my hope is that the City Council and the leaders of our community can come together with other members of our community who have expressed this need for safety and work together in collaboration, cooperation, to provide that basic need for all of us. So, I thank you for your time, and I wish you all well and happy.
Next is Jean Stacy, followed by Joe Tindall.
I'm Jean Stacy, 944 West 12th Alley here in Eugene, and I'm changing my comments a moment in respect for the story that we've heard tonight with sadness and to say I'm sorry on the part of all of us, and I'm certain the councilors are also sad. I think sometimes we let each other down because we allow things like this to happen as citizens without really speaking up as much as we should. And I would say tonight only briefly that I think we have a great deal as a community that we need to look at with regards to some of the things that a limited number of policemen are doing that we don't want to believe. We don't want to believe they're doing them. So, I hope that we'll be looking at that in the future because it's a very important part of what's happening to homeless people here, and I have recently become very involved through Occupy in the interest of the homeless. On a better note, and what I intended to talk about before I was hijacked by my heart, was some things that we've been learning about that are very hopeful in terms of very low-cost, possible long-term solutions for the homeless. None of them are exactly what would be appropriate, but some are things that break the bubble that says, for instance, tent cities can't work, or other such hypotheses. There's an enormous project in Seattle that has two huge tent cities of about 100 people each. It is itinerant, which I'm not certain would be the right thing here because we want to make or allow our homeless folks to be more self-sufficient than they are in this particular project. It's called Share Wheel. Share is the co-ed portion, wheel is the women's, and they have played an enormous advocacy role and have lived in these mobile communities now for, I think, around 15 to 20 years. It's a long time. And I think all of you are already familiar with Dignity Village in Portland, which began as tents, and then the city spent about $180,000, about $3,000 a shelter. All these projects have some problems, of course, but they're models that we can start following. Also, in New Jersey and Florida, there are long-term homeless tents that are totally lawless but still existing, and they're existing over a long period of time. So, I was here to say, we've got lots of things to explore that we hadn't thought of before, and lots of changes to make, and I'm looking forward very much as a member of your task force on the homeless to doing that and working with you all individually to come up with some brilliant ideas. Thank you.
Joe Tindall is next, followed by Maria Jenkins.
Evening. My name's Joe Tindall, and I live in Ward 7. I wanted to talk a little bit about perspective. On December 23rd, Rick Youngblood became the 112th homeless person in this area to die prematurely of unnatural causes during 2011. That's more than two every week. Unnatural causes include exposure, malnutrition, untreated medical conditions, drug and alcohol overdoses, and violence. This even exceeds the suicide rate among Iraq war soldiers and veterans, which is higher than the deaths in combat. Every war death is a tragic, and Rick Youngblood's death is a war casualty because we, as a society, have been waging a war against the homeless rather than waging a war against the causes of homelessness. There's only one reason we do not have the resources to end this problem, and that is the simple fact that rich people do not yet have enough money. Is what we have done, is what we have done really any different than the events a few years back, only a few miles from Costa Mesa, California, where Mr. Poling was a police officer? High school football players took their shiny new Christmas rifles and began picking off the unhoused. These kids were dumbfounded when the community failed to give them a medal for solving the homeless problem. Rick Youngblood's tragic death was used by mean-spirited, control-obsessed individuals to press their pre-existing goal to force the immediate closure of Occupy, an experiment that was making true inroads towards solving the homeless problem. Was Occupy closed because it was succeeding? There were no transition services provided for the unhoused. They were dispersed, plain and simple. The city offered bus vouchers anywhere they wanted to go. Are we surprised that few of these were taken? The homeless know that they face the same conditions or worse everywhere. How about camping at the fairgrounds? Oops, that was quietly closed down. Was that simply a cynical but transparent effort to break the group into smaller units so when they were forced to disperse, they would be easier to handle? Yeah, power and control, we get it. Rick Youngblood was drunk. He traveled from the mission onto the Occupy site where the police, who had asserted control, failed to stop him from entering and failed to stop him from starting a fight. Rick Youngblood was only the latest in a long string of war casualties on American soil.
Next, we have Maria Jenkins, followed by Teresa Bisho.
Hello, my name is Maria Jenkins, and I come from the River Road area. I'm homeless, like my husband said, not because I'm homeless because of mental condition or homeless for no money or anything. I'm homeless because I was turned to a felon for screaming to save my son Nicholas's life. They said that while I was screaming, I beat up this 200-pound officer. I think that's impossible. Police Chief Kearns got on the TV and to the media and turned around and said, "Attached you will find black and white copies of photos of two officers." Eugene Police Chief Police Kearns described to the media as brutally attacked. Does this woman really look brutally attacked? This has taken 10 minutes after it happened. She's laughing, she's holding her arms out like she just won the war. She also claimed the workman's comp case, which she falsified a workman's comp case. I'm the one that was brutally attacked. I've brought this to your people's attention, I don't know how many times, to have this case reopened, and you people haven't done that yet, knowing the wrong was done to my family. We're talking 60 stitches to my son's head. Last time I saw my son, he was gushing blood. I didn't know if he was dead or alive. And then, on the homeless issue, where is the compassion here? Where is any feeling here in Eugene for these people? I don't see the compassion here. I see the police getting away with whatever they want to do. They're completely lawless here with the people standing behind, not these people, but you people standing right behind them, so they're getting away with killing whoever they want and beating whoever they want half to death. They're even turning the homeless into felons. Once you turn them into felons, then they can't get a job, they can't get housing, they can't get anything. That's what's happened to us. We can't get nothing. I have pleaded with you people to reopen this case. I've showed you the pictures. Look at the police reports. It's all lies by Police Chief Kearns. She looks like she's been brutally attacked? Like I said, where is the compassion? I'm asking you people to reopen up this case. Mark Gisner has pushed everything under the table. It's even been confirmed in newspaper articles how he has taken cases and just put them under the table and buried them and did what he wanted, while he's done the same here in this case. Where is the compassion? And where is the feeling for these people? Please, I'm asking you people to reopen up this case. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Teresa Bisho is next, followed by Stephen Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Bisho here tonight on behalf of Arlene Company, located at 2911 Tennyson Avenue in Crescent Village. Later tonight, you are scheduled to adopt a resolution pertaining to a new VA clinic. Arlene Company has long supported improving services for veterans. We believe the resolution offers a clear, simple way to clarify your interpretation of the code without the legislative gymnastics that hindered the draft code amendment. Arlene Company supports the resolution to clarify that a VA clinic is permitted on land zoned I-1 campus industrial. We support your effort to provide assurance to the VA that Eugene has land available and attractive for the new outpatient clinic. We believe the resolution safeguards the allowance of the VA clinic on non-industrial zone land that permit other medical health treatment facilities. We trust the city will ensure that any necessary public improvements will be provided concurrent with the construction of the VA clinic. I want to thank you and the city manager for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Stephen Wilson is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
Thank you. My name's Steve Wilson, Ward 6. I'm here tonight to address protest in Eugene. We have a long, rich history of that, and I was pretty amused on Thursday and Friday when I read the newspaper. And, George Poling, I got to tell you that as a member of the male gender, I don't accept your reaction. Henceforth and going forward, I must have to refer to you as Ms. Poling. And the reason that is, I'm a grown man. I accept responsibility for my actions. Now, you have continually made it a point to stand against certain issues in this city. For example, you voted to, against the Occupy movement several times. The reason you were protested against, you didn't allow warming fires. Come on, this is humanity we're talking about. Now, there might have been an overreaching attempt by the protesters on the first account, and I feel maybe you were well within your right to call the police. That's what you're supposed to do. But here we are, and then you jump on Mayor Piercy because she didn't do enough. Why, a grown man can't handle his own actions. You come into this knowing full well that the public eye is on you. You know that if you come, if you contest these issues continually and with such vigor, you may come up against a point where you're protested against. And to compare this type of action to hate crimes, to elevate a protest to the level of terrorizing an entire segment of the population is deplorable. I don't know how you can stand up there, Ms. Poling, and call yourself a man. I mean, at the taxpayer's expense, we providing you security, a temporary fence, and now a permanent fence? A temporary fence, and now a permanent fence? Unbelievable. I mean, there are schools that are suffering, and you need protection? Unbelievable. I just, it's unfathomable to me. I have to stand up for my own actions continually, every time. And, you know, for you to, I mean, I can't say it any better than the editorial said it. The mayor has never wielded any control over the movement, much less its sizable contingent of rogue protesters. What more do you want her to do? She spoke out. She says, "Hey, quit it." I mean, I can't, I don't know what more you expect, you know? And then to say that you're gonna leverage your vote, that you portray yourself as some sort of, you know, someone who wants to, oh, where was it here? That you're a main compromiser is absolutely ludicrous. And to leverage your vote because you have personal bias is not right.
Next is Ally Valkyrie, followed by Dan Leav.
Ally Valkyrie, Ward One. I know you don't intentionally stack subjects, but it's kind of funny there. My train of thought starts with a quote by Mr. Polling. "When you can't sleep, when you can't eat, when you can't go to work for a full day, you have been terrorized." Under your own definition, sir, you had a role in terrorizing at least a hundred and fifty members of our community who had a safe space to sleep and eat until you voted to shut down their camp. Now, at the time, I had some angry words in regards to that decision, but I sure as heck didn't accuse you of terrorizing my community. And I find it more than a little offensive that you now accuse my fellow occupiers of terrorizing you. But at the same time, I thank you for such an absurd statement because it holds value in illustrating a point. The fact alone that you would make claims of being terrorized over tent monsters and topless gong protests is indicative of your privileged status and of the fact that you're completely out of touch with the realities of truly living in fear. Because if there's any group in the context of these controversies who's regularly terrorized Mr. Polling, it is the homeless, such as the couple right there. It is people who are intentionally marginalized, who are discriminated against, and whose status is criminalized. They are the ones who are terrorized in our community. You, sir, have no idea what it's like to be subject to such terror. I actually think you're quite fortunate if the most pressing issue in your life that keeps you from sleep is the fear of painted women showing up on your lawn at night. The women I know, the ones who are now on the streets, they can't sleep because they fear being raped, and I don't see anyone putting up a fence to keep them safe. And speaking of fences, I find it rather puzzling that when it came to Occupy, you were so strongly opposed to any taxpayer money going toward any sort of safety measures to protect the vulnerable members of the population from legitimate threats, and yet then you turn around and demand that the city provide you a fence and additional purity to prevent you, again, from tent monsters, boobies, and a gong. I don't think I'm off in my reasoning if I feel that public funds are better spent protecting those who have no choice but to sleep in places like a park than to spend them to protect you from bare-breasted women who chose to exercise their constitutional freedoms on the sidewalk in front of your home. You've also stated that attacking you personally crosses the line. Protesting in front of your house is not attacking you personally. Protesting at the houses of politicians and public figures is a time-honored American tradition, and it's only as personal as the actions you took and the statements you made that caused them to protest at your residence in the first place. You made a decision that offended and affected many in their personal life and capacity, and those people let you know personally, under the protection of the First Amendment. With all due respect, Mr. Polling, you reap what you sow. You are a public servant. You work for us. You are elected by the citizens, and when you serve the people, and the people feel you have fallen in your duty, they have every right to redress your grievances, and they have every right to do it in front of your house. There's a beautiful plaque that hangs in the back there. It bears a quote from Shakespeare. It says, "The people are the city." I urge us all never to lose sight of that, and I urge those who may have lost sight of that to remember that the message on that plaque will keep us safer and more secure than any fence ever will.[857.11][857.11](Beep).
We don't, the rules here are no yelling out, please. Dan Leav is next, followed by John Monroe.
I am speaking before the council today primarily because tonight was the council session that was supposed to discuss the progress being made with Occupy Eugene's continued protest at the Washington-Jefferson Park. Instead, the protest was ended by order of the city council, where no input from the public or Occupy Eugene organizers was ever sought. While there were legitimate concerns about the site, even if many were factually inaccurate, Occupy Eugene organizers attempted in good faith to work with the city and the city council to relieve these problems while continuing to practice peaceful assembly for political speech. The city council, from this vantage point, now does not appear to have been reciprocating that good faith. From the impossible promise of transition services, the implicit policy of harassment by the police forces at the site, to the city councils demonstrating no intention to do anything other than the minimum necessary to eliminate the occupation while still being able to provide nice soundbites to the press. Well, what most distresses me about this is that I know a large fraction of you on the council want to find ways to support the citizens who create Occupy Eugene, but we're constrained by what I can only guess were perceptions of budget need and what is politically possible. For the future, which will include Occupy Eugene, I encourage all councillors to join their many constituents who have seen the national Occupy movement, to reinvent what we see as possible, and to try for solutions that transcend the limits of money and political reality.
Next is John Monroe, followed by Michael Gannon.
Hi, my name is John Monroe, Ward One nowadays. So, I was gonna come and offer some more constructive criticisms on the actions of the city government and EPD, but I think that's been covered by those of my contemporaries in the movement. So I'm gonna move on to some positive ideas. We've been coming up against a stereotype, a problem, a kind of barrier, over and over and over again, and that is the idea of participation. It's the idea that people can get involved in taking care of themselves, and it's more specifically in Eugene, Oregon, that homeless individuals are more than capable of moving into and taking leadership roles and becoming quite capable of helping those around them. We've continually come up against this logic time and time and time again, that there are specialists, there are providers, and then there are clients. And regardless of the circumstances, those clients will stay behind the counter, no, do not come around, no, do not ask questions, take what we give you, smile, say thank you, and leave as quickly as you can. And we've seen that so effectively over the past couple weeks, that our homeless populations have gone back to hiding in bushes, jumping illegally onto trains, moving as quickly out of town for fear of reprisals from EPD and otherwise, that all opportunities that we had to help those hundred-and-fifty-some-odd homeless in our camp are largely gone. And we are now doing backpedaling work to try to keep our connections open as much as possible. Now, I agree with everything said about certain errors and certain malicious behaviors that were carried out against members of our camp. That's been said. What I want to point out is this continual belief that is at the base level of decisions being made by social services and many members of the city government, that we have to keep that counter in place, that when a homeless person walks in, they're gonna leave just another client, that they're gonna have their number, they're gonna get their service, and then that's it. That's the end of the business. They, at five o'clock, they leave. That's it. Well, unfortunately, despite all these prevalent beliefs, we have many individual, one was sitting right over there in the front row, a homeless gentleman of Eugene for fifteen years, who by the end of our business operations was running a kitchen that was serving more meals per day than any restaurant locally owned in Eugene, and was doing so with the assistance of, I think, five, six other people on a regular basis? I know people that live in houses and have degrees in management that would have had a mental breakdown under those conditions, and this particular individual did it all by himself, and he is one of dozens of examples. The giant economic collapse that we are just really beginning to feel, that we are just really beginning to see, and that hundreds of people just this year have been kicked out of their houses as a result of, will continue, at least for the next few years. And if the imagination of this government does not improve, we're not gonna see solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gannon is next, followed by Maggie.
My name is Michael Gannon. I live in Andrea's Ward. I keep forgetting the number. I want to talk to you about fish stories tonight. I specifically wanted to talk about salmon and see if in my three minutes I can get you to think about salmon, and how important they have been to the peoples of the West Coast, in particular, peoples around the globe on the other side of the ocean also. But in the Northwest, great salmon, awesome salmon, salmon that, when Indians talk about them and tell the stories that they've heard, are almost beyond belief. Stories that we expect from fourteen-year-old kids going over to the deschutes. But really, the stories that come down to us have connected us with peoples living in small villages all over the Northwest. I've gotta go fast here, so pardon me, because I'm without my glasses. They have not arrived yet, so I gotta read fast here. But it is my own writing. Throughout these villages, tribes, many cultures eagerly anticipated the arrival of different runs of salmon. The Lewis and Clark expedition depended on salmon when they reached the waters of the Columbia Basin. Settlers, unhoused settlers, moving across the plains, looked forward to the salmon. So, we're thinking of, as I mentioned earlier, great salmon, maybe eight feet, the whole These salmon have richly supplied humans of the West so well that few cried out in alarm when machines begin taking them, stripping them from the unbelievable quantities, and railroads carried them to freeway, faraway markets. Today, I see salmon in the streets of Lane County, and especially the urban areas. I see salmon in the litter of aluminum cans in the roads, especially around the university and near our high schools. The Oregon Bottle Bill has offered a five cents refund on these cans since the early nineteen-seventies. I had to skip over a whole bunch of background material to get down to the nitty-gritty. We need support from the city council to talk to our lobbyists about salmon and the bottle bill.
Thank you. Maggie is next, followed by Johnny Lake.
I haven't spoken to you before. I live in Eugene, and I guess what I want to speak about tonight is the all-important issues of housing and health care. Those are, without a doubt, the most important things we're facing right now because of the economic crisis in our nation. When I lived briefly in Florence, I did some advocating regarding health care over there. They didn't have any doctors, and they weren't gonna have any for two years. So I wrote the governor, and it turns out that for the number of employees they had in their clinic, they were violating their contract with the state. And so I was able to convince the governor to send doctors to Florence, which, as you know, is a rural area and is cut off from Eugene, and so it's very difficult to get a doctor. Also, I went to the Oregon Health Authority meetings there, and I talked to six Republicans about our profit-driven health care system. And within ten minutes, they stood up and told the Oregon Health Authority that the profit-driven system isn't working. And what I see here with the housing crisis and Occupy Eugene and the homeless is the same thing. We have these huge organizations like United Way and Salvation Army who take collections for donations for the poor, but then you have these directors who make millions of dollars. And that's not a very efficient system. That's a profit-driven system. And when we live in a country where we have the lowest quality of health care per dollar spent compared to other industrialized nations, and it's the same with our housing situation, we need to start collaborating with people who need housing and finding out how we can do it more humanely, more efficiently, and by cutting out a lot of these inefficiencies where lots of directors are making lots of money, and that's money that could be spent on housing. Like, if you really spent three hundred thousand dollars on putting up lighting for the homeless encampment, you could have spent that three hundred thousand dollars on housing. And you're not the only ones. The city, the state is not the only one. It's the Oregon Vagabond. They allowed the Salvation Army to take an ad out in their paper. They're not even opening up their Egan Warming Center until it's below freezing, till twenty-eight degrees. What's that about? You know, there's hypocrisy abounding everywhere, and there's, you need to collaborate, not have this adversarial relationship with people who need to be housed. Thank you.
Johnny Lake is next, followed by Kristen Taylor.
Thank you very much for the few minutes, and I wanted to honor all of the voices here and their courage for coming to a meeting like this and attempting to influence decision-makers. This is what democracy is supposed to be about, and it's not three minutes. So I wanted to use my three minutes for an example.
Do you go in front of the mic, please?
Want you to take a look. We need to be over here, and I can speak louder, because you need to see. Put us on the front of your newspaper, and then this town or any town, and you're gonna pick from these three people a basketball team. Who are you gonna pick? Anybody on hand? Who are you gonna pick? Did you guys talk?
No.
Somebody can talk?
No.
Who would you pick?
John, I'm sorry. Johnny, we can't do it that way, okay?
Okay.
So just make your statement.
And everybody laughs when they pick the basketball team. Critical thinking, critical question I want you to think about.
You know, this is being recorded for the television. They'll hear you much better if you're by the microphone.
I'm not worried about television. I'm worried about...
Well, a lot of people will get to hear you.
Do you enter a thinking process to get to that decision? Are those pictures not already in your mind? Did you make that decision without even having to think about it? And put these same three people on any newspaper in this country, this newspaper in our town, and you're gonna pick the person that's most likely to be dealing drugs in your community? Who are you gonna pick? And people don't laugh. And the critical question is, do you enter a thinking process to get to this decision? Or are not those pictures already in your mind? As so many people in here spoke tonight about stereotypes, we all stereotypes, including our police officers. So did I get racial profiling in this town on a regular basis? And nobody wants to admit that we all do this, that we make judgments based on what we think about other people. How much information do you need to confirm something that you already kind of believe is true anyway? Not very much. So if you believe I'm a criminal, how much information or material do you need to pull me over? Nothing. I work at Northwest Christian University as a professor. I've asked every other professor there, have they ever been followed by the police and pulled over? Not one. I work with colleagues at the University of Oregon. I've asked them, how many of them have been followed by the police and pulled over? None. I teach and work at Lane ESD. I asked them, how many of you have been followed by the police and pulled over? None, because they happen to be white. And white people don't get racial profiling, do they? Except in New Mexico, on the Indian Reservation, where I train police who are Native American, guess who complains about racial profiling? White people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen Taylor is next, followed by Bill Cluse.
Good evening, city councillors, and Honorable Mayor Kitty Piercy. My name is Kristen Taylor, and I work for TBG Architects and Planners at one thirty-two East Broadway, Suite Two Hundred, Ward Three.
Good evening, city councilors and honorable mayor Kitty Percy. My name is Kristen Taylor, and I work for TBG Architects and Planners at 132 East Broadway, Suite 200, Ward 3. I'm here again tonight on behalf of the Register Guard, who owns 60 acres of campus industrial on Chad Drive, to express the Register Guard's support of your adoption of Resolution 5051, clarifying that an outpatient clinic operated by the United States Department of Veterans Affairs is a government service. The adoption of the resolution clarifying the allowance of a VA clinic on I-1 zone property is an essential decision to allow viable potential sites in Eugene to be considered in the final stages of the VA selection process. I encourage you to adopt this resolution tonight to give us a greater chance of being selected for a VA clinic in our community. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Bill Cluse is next, followed by Bob Maturoni.
Mayor Percy, members of the council, Bill Cluse, would like to follow in the heels of Teresa Bishow and Kristen Taylor, endorse everything they said. I represent Aquas Development, which would like to be the developer selected to develop the VA clinic on the Register Guard site. I support this resolution. If you pass this resolution tonight interpreting your code, my client will stay in the running as a candidate. If you don't pass this resolution tonight, my folks will be off the shortlist. Candidly, there's likely to be opposition to the interpretation you're gonna make tonight, hopefully. Most likely, it's gonna come from other potential developers of other sites. In response, I would say that if you pass this resolution tonight, you are not picking a site, you are not recommending a site, you are just expanding the list of potential As Kristen Taylor explained, this interpretation will simply explain that the VA clinic is a government service. This will not do any harm to the zoning code as a whole. There's only gonna be one of these things in Eugene and Springfield together, and the question is, where will it be? A year ago, my client asked the planning director to interpret the code in this way, and the planning director did. We took that to the hearings official who reversed the planning director. We couldn't bring that issue to you because a private person can't, but the staff has done that. By bringing this issue to you, the staff is recommending that you do what the council is best at doing, which is to interpret the code. And if you make this decision in this fashion, instead of, say, amending the code, you are in the most defensible position if somebody takes issue and files an appeal. Kind of tedious, big picture is, this is the right way to make this decision, and my client hopes that you do it tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Maturoni is next, followed by Dennis Randazzo, it looks like.
Bob Maturoni, I'm in Mike Clark's ward. I actually thought I was gonna come here and kind of be on my own, since there's a big football game on tonight. And so I'm glad I came, because I'm here to show support for Mr. Polling and possibly explain a few things to the Occupy folks. I see you sitting here smirking and laughing and very proud of your actions against Mr. Polling, and I think they're totally uncalled for. If you want to change people's opinion, you don't attack their families and their children. You should be embarrassed, you should be ashamed. And those bandanas you wear, the next time you walk into my building with one of those over your face, I'm gonna ask you to remove it. Because, again, if you want respect, you have to earn respect. If you want the rest of the population to join you, you have to treat them with respect. Okay? And I'm gonna keep score for you. Mr. Youngblood is not a martyr. He was a victim, and he was a victim of your organization. Okay? It happened at your camp, and I hear people here in this room ask for police protection to keep him out because he was intoxicated. Yet, you object to the police harassment, on the other hand. So you can't have it both ways. You go one way or the other. And the real problem came with the decision council made to, with the city manager standing at this very podium, with the police chief standing next to him, and I gotta assume that the police chief, as a city employee, was coerced into saying that he wanted to suspend those ordinances, said that they couldn't camp in a public park without a permit and without a bond to indemnify the city against, and the taxpayers, I might add, against cost if something went wrong. Now, I know the mayor takes very great credit for dispersing this without any other problems other than one person being killed, but, in fact, the mayor and all of you that voted for this caused this problem and put Mr. Polling in this position. So I think you all owe him a public apology, and you can start when I leave this podium by giving him the apology. If you hadn't taken that action, this would've never happened. You have divided this community, you have polarized it again, and what support I could have for these people's cause is quickly eroding by their actions and by the fact they hide behind the issue that they have no person in charge. What you were supposed to do was get the name of the responsible party and get the insurance policy, and then you can allow them to do whatever they want. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dennis Randazzo, and I reside in Portland, and appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I wanted to comment on the proposed resolution for the I-1 zone in reference to the Veterans Administration Clinic. I think I'd like to open this comment by saying I find it curious that Arlene Company, who has been adamantly opposed to this situation, is suddenly in favor, but I'm sure that they have their own personal reasons for that. I wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Number one, I have distributed some information for you because I received an email from the city attorney's office that said that they were not gonna give you that documentation from the previous commission meeting where this situation was discussed in detail. And I think that was intentionally omitted, frankly, because this resolution is really not about improving your I-1 zone, it's about competing for a real estate deal. And I think Mr. Cluse made that fairly clear in his testimony. As you know, in March of 2011, your own hearings officer reviewed the information on a situation for a VA clinic in the very same property with the very same owner, as a matter of fact, the very same developer, who currently happens to be under a federal indictment for environmental fraud and determined that it was not an applicable use. We stand by, I stand by that decision. I believe that what staff is asking you to do is to take your magic wand and wave it and say a VA clinic is approved, when, as a matter of fact, they haven't spent five minutes doing the normal and typical due diligence to determine the impact on the infrastructure that a major facility like this, a regional facility, which frankly wasn't designed to be in an I-1 or an industrial zone, will have on your infrastructure. And I think that needs to be considered prior to making a decision on this resolution. Therefore, I respectfully request that you reject the resolution, and I believe that the Land Use Board of Appeals would agree with my position. Thank you.
Next is Charles Hibbert, followed by Jim.
I'm Charles Hibbert, and I have a business down on West 11th, and I live down on River Road. I listened to the mayor's speech the other day, and she's made an emphasis on jobs, jobs, jobs. Well, you know what? There's a reason why Eugene has got the highest unemployment even during good times, is because in this town, it may not be the reality, but there's a perception that Eugene is a very bad town to bring business to. So I'm not sure how you're gonna get over that perception. One of the reasons why I actually came tonight is because Mr. Polling, I apologize for some citizens in Eugene to step the line. When we were Tea Party guys and we had a protest, we went to the city, we got a permit, we had to take a bond out, and we had to sign a release that if any damages happened, we were responsible, and the city wouldn't bear any cost. I was at the cleanup crew, and when they left, and I came there with the trashcans and that, the bunch of us, there was nothing there, because they cleaned up, and it was cleaner than when the people arrived. And that's how that protest should be taken. Except for, there's people on this city council that won't respect the citizens, the hard-working taxpayers, but they would waive a law that's there for a specific reason. They made laws for people not to camp in the sites for this very reason, that the people that voted for that, to allow these people to camp, should've known it was gonna get out of control. Mayor Giuliani said the day after they allowed camping in New York, he said, "This is a bad decision and is gonna get out of control." That was before the city of Eugene made the decision. You did a good thing, we stand behind you, the citizens, the working class, the business people in Eugene stand behind you. I think that's about, what have I got? Yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Jim is next, followed by, it looks like, David Picioni.
I'd like to speak on two issues. First thing is, I'm a veteran.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
My name's James Matheson, honorable mayor, and several other people. Some I like, some I don't. First thing I'd like to say is, I support the VA expansion of the VA clinic here. I'm a veteran, I have a broken hand, I can't even get an X-ray here, so I'd appreciate more services. The second thing I got is, come here, Phoenix. You remember when we got kicked out of Washington-Jefferson Park and everybody was running around? How did you feel?
Bad.
Were you pretty terrorized?
Yeah.
Did you know where you were gonna go?
No.
It was pretty terrifying, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All right, you have a nice day.
David Picioni is next, followed by Jennifer Frinzer.
Hello, David Picioni. I'm in Artisus Ward, and I support Occupy. I think Occupy was the best thing that's happened to Eugene in a really long time, many years. I've been here since '95, and I haven't seen anything as organized and as communal and as democratic. And to apologize to Polling, or to Clark, or to Farr for kicking us out of there is ridiculous. I will never do it. And I'm one of the occupiers, and there's no way you're gonna get that apology unless you apologize first for putting all these people in the cold who are freezing. You know how cold it is out there right now? It's colder in midnight and in the middle of the night. People don't have where to go if they don't wanna pray, go to the mission and pray, and if they have other things, like they're gay or whatever, things like that. And this is something that the Eugene Police Employees Association published. It's just an excerpt. It said, "Our officers are being followed around, taunted, threatened, tormented, and insulted while they're in the camp. When there are officers in defense with only one possible avenue of escape against over 150 people who have made it clear they are willing to harm them, there is no amount of equipment or police tactics that make it safe for our officers to enforce the law. There are human feces, vomit, and other biohazards on the muddy paths that our officers are forced to walk on." Have you been there, Mr. Polling? Have you been to Occupy? Did you witness that? No? It didn't happen. I was there every day. I lived three blocks away. I was there every day. The officers that would come were treated with a lot of respect. Everybody was giving them plenty of space, and they were allowed to go wherever they wanted to, and nobody was taunting them, nobody was harassing them, nobody was antagonizing them. So this is a place, an experiment that should've been allowed to continue, and I feel really bad that the people that are in charge, you guys, were unable to keep this going for us. Thank you.
Jennifer Frinzer is next, followed by Elizabeth Yandel.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Frinzer-Nolton, and Betty Taylor is my city councilwoman. I'm a participant of OE, but I speak on my own behalf. I feel that the city, its officials, EPD, and OE participants are on a very crucial learning curve about how democracy plays out in our town. The Constitution, particularly the Bill of Rights, do not find their relevance in Supreme Court chambers, but in the day-to-day interactions and exchanges between local government and the citizens, law enforcement and the citizens. In day-to-day interactions is where the wheels of Constitution meet the road of democracy. The healthy tension from balancing of state interests and the citizens' rights is where democratic process comes to life. Citizens, city officials, EPD, and press are all learning their roles in making democracy work. That's what's going on right now. It's very important. We can't lose sight of that goal and step out of our roles or overreact. We can't afford that. It would only serve the interests of powers that would like to usurp the democratic process, and that serves all of us in this room. We can't afford to alienate each other. As a protester, it's not my goal nor my intention to be frightening. It's not my intention to be an aggressive person, but I will be bold, and I'll be provocative of ideas, and I'll exercise my free speech rights to the fullest extent. I see that as my obligation. I would like to see our country's full democratic process restored in my lifetime, for the sake of my children and the planet. I've worked for years here with several community groups, including Handgun Control, the Million Mom March, and faith-based initiatives as a Quaker. That's a historic peace church that uses nonviolent principles for furthering justice. OE is not a dangerous group. It doesn't even come close to the accusations in the paper. I worked on, I'm gonna lose my time, but I want to let you know that terrorists would have nothing to do with our group, and we would have nothing to do with them. Thank you.
Last speaker is Elizabeth Yandel.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Yandel. I live in the Whittaker neighborhood, and I'd like to start off by thanking everyone who's here, regardless of your opinions, for taking the time and caring enough to come down here and express them. I know we can't all agree on everything, but it's important that people care enough about our situation and our future, that they're here, and at least we can focus on the fact that we have that in common. And I'd also like to, although I appreciate you expressing your opinion, firmly disagree that if people demand the protection of police, that they have to forego demanding there's not harassment. I think that the idea of having a police department is that both of those things should be absolutely important. But the reason I came up here today is to express that I'd like to see the city council pass a resolution expressing that... pass a resolution expressing that the city of Eugene does not recognize corporations as persons, and to take a stand in defending the people in this community that voted you into office from corporations that reap the benefits of doing business in this city but evade paying their taxes, and take a stand in saying that such businesses are not welcome here, and that that behavior is unacceptable. And on a more theoretical level, I'd like to remind the city council and all the people in this room that, although I think we can all come to an agreement that everyone should be treated fairly under the law, that laws are capable of changing, and that it is in our complete power to change those laws in accordance to our specific situation, and that enforcing laws that were written in the past and for the past is inappropriate, and enforcing laws that were written not in the spirit of protecting and serving all people, homeless people and housed people, and were not written in the spirit of protecting the rights of those people is inappropriate and unacceptable. And I hope that the city council can remember that in all of your decision-making in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum, and I make a couple comments, and I'll call on councillors. One is, I want to thank you all for coming, and tell you that I totally support all of you coming here. We all strive to keep this a safe and good place for people to come and speak, to give their thoughts and opinions. Each of us up here strive to make good decisions and good laws for our community. I think we all support our staff completely when they operate within the law and the direction that we give them, and if they do things at our behest, then we're responsible for it. I may disagree with, and frequently do, with some of the positions of councillors, but I totally support their rights to their opinions, and my right to disagree. And things that are asserted here are the opinion when people come to speak before us. They're the opinions of the speakers, and not necessarily backed up by evidence or fact, or may only be a piece of the story, because there are many pieces that make up truth. No matter what one wishes, council cannot, is constrained by charter, the city charter, from dealing with city personnel issues. So even if we wished, we could each be taken out of office for interfering on city personnel issues. I encourage you all, this day and every day, when you come to council to try to talk in a way where you can be heard by most of Eugene. And that's hard, because you want to express your heartfelt beliefs and what you stand for. But at the same time, you've got to recognize that there are people with very different opinions throughout the community, and the more you sort of open yourself up to being able to express your point of view in a way that allows others to have different points of view, the better off we all will be in trying to come to a place that makes us a better community. So, Council Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the passion in the room. There's been a few times in my time on the council when I have felt a lot of passion in the room, and I think it's important to try to hear what's being said when there's a lot of passion in the room, from whatever direction. I have worked very hard in the many years I've been involved in both human services, but also involved in public service, to try to look at the issues that are being raised, regardless of who raises them, whether they're raised by somebody who looks like me, or doesn't look like me, or acts like me, or who doesn't act like me, or from a group that may be a group I'm not familiar with, or a group that I've worked with for many years. I try to teach or understand their position on its own merits, and to deal with the issues as issues. And I still continue that same perspective, and every person that comes to the podium, I want to listen to the issue that they're raising, because I want to make sure I understand what that issue is. And that gives me the ability to have enormous understanding for people's passion, their fears, the other things that are going on. But we have kind of an agreement here, that we focus on the issue and not the person, because the person is really not how a civilized society gets its things done. It gets things done by having good discourse on the issues. And when something transcends the issue and becomes an attack on an individual person just by virtue of them being an individual person, regardless of the decision they make, it's no longer civilized. It's no longer part of a civilized society. I sit next to all of my colleagues here, and at one time or another, we will disagree, and we'll disagree vehemently on a particular issue. But we get things done because we focus on the issue and not the personality. And when we leave this room, we leave this room as colleagues, and that is how we get things done. And from that perspective, when someone attacks one of my colleagues, they are attacking me, and I will take it as a personal attack if they want to attack my colleague, and it doesn't matter whether I agree with the position they take on an issue. We're a civilized society, and this group of eight people and a mayor sitting at this table are colleagues. So to attack any one of us is to attack all of us. We want to focus on the issue. We want to deal with the issues. I will not give up working on issues that are important, and I will not judge an issue based on who brings that issue to us. I will consider every issue on its own merits, and I will work as hard as I can, as I have for many years, to try to do the right thing. But it will be hard to do it if we are attacked personally for what we try to do. We must stay together. We must stay civilized. We must focus on the issues and not devolve into personal attacks. Thank you for listening.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came tonight. I appreciate all of your points of view. I do regret that the camp was closed, and that it was closed so abruptly, especially. I'm glad that we have a task force on homelessness, especially glad that people like Jean Stacey are going to be a part of it. But I think that should have come before the closure of the camp, that the time was to get ideas for what to do should have come before people were pushed out on the streets. I also want to say something about the post office. The first speaker mentioned that. I think that a post office that serves everyone is an important part of our democracy, and has been from the very beginning. It's been a source of pride in our country ever since the Pony Express. And it's as much a part of democracy, I think, as public education. There are some things that serve everybody, and regardless of their circumstances, and the postal service is one of those, or should be. And I appreciate the persons coming here, the first speaker who came to talk to us about that. Thank you.
Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your words, Mayor. I couldn't have said it any better. I agree with a lot of your comments, and also, Chris, I take to heart what you say. I do feel a kinship to the people that we sit up here with. We're all elected, we go through the same experiences, we come from different walks of life, different backgrounds, but we tend to agree a lot, more than we don't. So I really do understand Counselor Pryor's comments about feeling, you know, feeling if one of us is attacked, the rest of us are. You know, I just have issues with that kind of behavior that was displayed. I wanted to ask the city manager if you could get copies of the letter and the information that Ernie Short, the postal worker, got to us by Wednesday at our tables, because I really think that the 13th is coming up pretty close, and so I definitely want to take advantage of it, Mayor. I hope we can all support the postal workers in trying to do our part, whatever we can do to support that. I also want to make a comment about Dr. Johnny Lake. I think what he was trying to express with some concerns that he had over racial profiling, and everybody has different experiences in this community, and that was his experience here recently, and so I'm sorry that he left, because I know that it's a challenge for people of color in this community, along with other people who are not of the dominant look and race of Eugene. It's an ongoing issue in my community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Polling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, last word was? Mr. Madison, I believe it was Mr. Madison, thank you for your service to our country and the military. I'd just like to take a moment to thank the many, many countless people that have sent me emails, phone calls, personal contacts, many of which actually were on the side of the Occupy movement, for their words of encouragement and support, and concern. The outpouring of contacts that I've had was overwhelming. It meant a great deal to me to hear from people that were on both sides of the issues, supporting my right to make a decision based on what I felt was the proper course of action. I also want to take a moment to thank the members of the Eugene Police Department that responded to my residence on Christmas night when my wife called 911. The officers that did respond were exemplary, despite the fact that they were being called names, being cursed at, and being baited into a confrontation. Every single last officer that responded responded with the utmost professionalism, above and beyond anything I have ever seen before, and they need to be commended for their actions that night. I appreciate the work they did, and the way they handled that situation, it was just an outstanding job. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody's coming tonight and everyone speaking. To follow up on what Counselor Polling said, I know at least one, and maybe more, but at least one of the officers that responded to his house tonight was in the audience tonight, and I appreciate their work, as George mentioned. I also want to say that I was pretty, I got a little heated a few moments ago and kind of popped off a little bit, but I don't do that very often, but I did. I think I'll just leave it that Counselor Polling, or excuse me, Counselor Pryor said an amazing piece there, and I could no more add to what is the important thing to express, I think, about this evening. I would say that there are folks within the Occupy Eugene movement whose opinions I respect, I may not agree with, I may disagree, but whose intellect and whose opinions I respect. And I like the idea of having intelligent conversation. I resent the confrontation in a personal fashion, and can hope that all of us can rise above that. This chair that I get to sit in here, I've said this before, doesn't belong to me. It belongs to the people who live in Ward 5, and they're just letting me sit in it for a while. And while they do, they expect that I'm going to speak for them, because although I've heard it said here, excuse me, several times tonight, we're actually not a democracy. We're a republic. We're a constitutional republic. We like people to represent us. And this chair belongs to the people who've asked me to go and represent them for a while. So I try to do that as best I can, and I screw up sometimes. But I try to speak for them as best I understand what values are important to them when it comes to the decisions in our community. So I hope you'll understand that not everybody in our community agrees, and we're all just trying to make the best decisions we can, and the folks up here are trying to do the best they can to represent those who've asked them to do it, and that they've asked if they can. And I hope we can do this in a more civilized fashion as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, everyone who came tonight. Pat? Pat? He's still there?
Pat, still there?
No, I think he went to his wedding. Not there. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's a consent calendar. Council President? That would be you.
Yeah. Where are we?
After the consent calendar.
Oh, yeah. I move to approve the consent calendar.
Here. Do you have the?
No, I don't. I have that green sheet coming.
It should be right in front of you. You have a consent petition.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Is there a second? Are you the second?
Pat.
Second. You are. Yeah, okay. Who's the second?
But who's supposed to, though?
Okay.
Betty will be second.
Okay.
For now.
Who's second?
Doesn't matter.
George, are you doing the seconding tonight?
Okay.
Yep, all right. We're golden, then, first. All right. So now, we have someone in the queue here. Counselor Polling.
Yes, I'd like to pull Item E, please.
Okay, we'll pull Item E. All right, we're ready to vote on the rest of the consent calendar, other than Item E. Would you please vote? Six in favor and none in opposition. So it passes, and then we'll go to Item E, and that was, who pulled that one?
I did.
Oh, you did. All right, go ahead. Counselor Polling.
Thank you. I raised a couple of questions earlier to city staff, and I don't know if you got the response that I did, but one of the questions was about, had they contacted Luba to kind of get an idea? Well, I was advised this afternoon that unfortunately, that's not allowable, so they weren't able to do that. And then the other question was, I was looking for any precedent that was set anywhere else in the state. And again, that was not, they couldn't find any anywhere. So, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction, trying to do the best we can to make sure we locate a VA clinic within our city, primarily for the good of the veterans that are currently here and the ones that are returning shortly. And the decision that we're making tonight, and it was said earlier, is we're not making a decision where to site it, we're just opening up more opportunities. Mr. Randazzo, I've read the cover letter to your 20-pound document that you submitted earlier, and I appreciate your point of view on this issue. I just wanted to make it clear that, I know I sent the questions out, I just wanted my fellow councillors to understand the responses that I got, and I do intend to support this resolution.
Okay. Counselor, oh, that is you, Counselor Polling. All right, so now I think we're ready to vote on Item E. Would you please vote? Six in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to the next item, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And we have Action 5, which is the adoption of Resolution 1063. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The audit firm, Isler CPA, has completed the audit of the agency's annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011, and issued a clean opinion. For policymakers, a clean opinion means that the information in the financial report is accurate and reliable. In addition, the auditors noted that nothing came to their attention that caused them to believe that the agency is not in compliance with state regulations pertaining to debt, deposit of public funds, preparation and adoption of the budget, accounting records, and the related internal control structure. We are asking that the board approve a resolution acknowledging that it received the report. If you have any questions, Ben Cronin is here to answer them.
Thank you. So, Council President, will you put the motion on the table, please? I mean, Urban Renewal District.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 1063, acknowledging receipt of the annual financial report for the Urban Renewal Agency of the city of Eugene for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011.
I second it.
Moved and seconded? Chugged up. I don't see any questions, so I think we're ready to vote on that. Would you please vote? Voting? Everybody vote? Okay, six in favor and none in opposition. It passes. I'm going to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and that finishes our business for today. So, thank you all very much.